Found it upstairs?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, June 20th, 2017. My name is Scott Bugbee. To my right is Jim Leehan. To my left is Jeff Palumbo. To Jeff's left is Jack Hathaway, our Town Administrator. And to Jack's left is Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant. This meeting is being audio and videotaped, consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will be rebroadcast on NCTV's government channel and uploaded online to YouTube. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jack, would you do the honor of reading our agenda?
Be happy to. We have a Report of the Warrants. We have action items. The only item tonight is annual appointments. And then we have four discussion items: the Public Safety Building update, Southwood Hospital, NA PC Economic Development Plan update, and finally, a staffing update.
Great, thank you. Okay, Report of the Warrants, I can say I duly signed and authorized those, so we're all good there.
You have a list of appointments?
Yes, we do.
Do you happen to want to do Southwood, since the ladies in the audience might be here for Southwood?
I'm a man of to that, sure. So I'm moving to Southwood.
Not very exciting news, but we have a little interesting. We had a, we got an email from the...
Archdiocese.
Archdiocese, yeah, sorry, I was trying to think of the right name. The Archdiocese, and they have now officially separated ways with the former potential buyer. And they wanted, they've reached out to us to see if we want to get together and just talk about plans for the property and, I think, just probably reconnect. So I thought we would just have a member of the Planning Board, a member of the Selectmen, myself, Bob Bullock, if he's available, although he's gone for the next two weeks. And we would have had the planner if he didn't leave, but a group like that, two members of the Planning Board, I think, John Weddleton and Walter have both volunteered already.
Okay.
So I don't know, Jim's been the guy involved with Southwood, I don't know if you want to, it's up to you guys to decide.
Well, I'm...
It's acceptable to me.
Yeah, acceptable to me, because I know it's probably more day than night, so I know it's tougher for Jeff, tougher for me, if you're all fair with that.
Yeah, I'd like to stick with it, actually.
Yeah, sure.
You're both agreeable with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
So I'll reach back to them and set that up. I'll talk to Jim about availability, and we'll set that up right away.
Okay.
I have been told that they're, that they also reached out to a developer that we are familiar with in town, and he has expressed interest. So I think the meeting will happen, hopefully, pretty quick. It sounds like the Archdiocese and this developer, well, not sounds like, they are having conversations, so I think the sooner we get into the loop of that, the better.
Yeah, interesting.
To me, that's good news.
The opening, they want to, start to, come through us early would be nice, right?
Maybe all that work we did now for the last three years will help us figure this out a little bit better.
That's all I had on Southwood, this is what they've been showing us.
Could have watched it on TV.
No.
No.
So you responded, you haven't responded yet, then, right, from that email?
I just told them I would set it up.
Okay.
But I will do that now, I wanted to see who...
Do you have any questions?
Questions? Betsy, Jane?
So...
Need the microphone.
Right in front of you, right in front of you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Ponville. So the names that you just listed will meet with the Archdiocese to discuss the potential, the new person, or to set plans for getting ideas from the townspeople as to what they would like to see on the site? Will the input of citizens be...
I think it's more the latter. I think that they're looking for guidance from us as to what would work, so we don't go through the painful process that we went through before, where we ended up with a project that didn't work. So I think it, this is a good step, because in, you know, up to this point, we've never had any interaction prior to a potential buyer being involved.
And it seemed like...
Now they're getting us in at the front end.
Okay. The developer came, we were thrilled with some ideas, and then we had to see if we could work with that. But now, somebody will come along and know what it is we'd like, and be able to...
One way to look at it, I think, and you both participated, and I know Jane was on the committee, you know, we worked very hard to come up with what we thought, conceptually, would work on the property. We couldn't get the agreements tied up sufficiently enough to have confidence that it would end up the way we thought it should be. So we've got a concept that, at least this group felt, could work. And I think that's a good place to start. You know, some developer may not like that concept, I mean, that's a whole different conversation, but my understanding is they're looking for a little guidance from us as to what they think that, how do we make this a little easier?
Am I correct in assuming that the concept is residential?
And commercial.
And some, but predominantly residential. I was wondering if the concept would change to be more commercial or even industrial?
It is zoned for commercial and residential, restricted age, right now. You know, I'm only speaking for me.
So staying with...
Hypothetically, some developer could come in and use existing zoning.
Okay. But that would seem like a good goal, to keep the existing...
That would certainly be the easiest.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I mean, nothing wrong with industrial, commercial, too. Someone wanted to put a biotech park up there, that, I think, we would love that, yeah.
Yeah.
I just saw they built an incubator thing in Mansfield, right, that when guys cut some industrial property, he's going to do that. I know, we just don't seem to attract that right kind of people, but that'd be nice, if they want to, you know, it's a nice piece of property, once it's cleaned.
I have another question.
Sure.
At what point will notifications go out to the townspeople, announcing what happened and what will happen?
Well, I don't know that there's a notification process at this point, because nothing's happening. I mean, this is just a preliminary discussion with a property owner to, I think, just think through what might work on that piece of property. There's no, there's no contract, there's no buyer that I'm aware of, that we know of, at this point in time. So until that happens, then the wheels will turn. But prior to that, there's really nothing that's either communicate.
Okay.
I mean, other than what we're doing here tonight.
Right.
You know, there's, there's conversation, and that's a good thing.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Jane, you were on the committee, did you want to add anything to that?
The only thing is, if the concept is what the plan, as it was devised by the prior developer, if that was the concept, I guess I would have concerns about that, because I don't think it was ever proved that that site could handle that density.
No.
So hopefully, whatever. But I'm pleased with every, that they asked for input, and it sounds like you've got great people in the loop that can help them out, so I think that's great.
Yeah, I would agree, and the concept that we were working with did require a zoning change.
Right.
Whereas, you know, to me, the ideal answer would be to fit what's there.
Absolutely, yeah.
And test it, like you said, see what kind of capacity is there, too. And I think a different developer with different, not intentions, but just different wherewithal and economics probably can, would do the testing, like you said, before, come and figure out, we're going to put 200 here, and this and that, and when it can only fit 100, or something like that, so.
And somebody that we're, we know and have worked with, that's, that would be great.
That'd be a win-win, I would think, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
When will, when will we know anything about this potential? Did you say?
We'll report it at the Selectments meeting. When we know something, we share it. I mean, it's not a secret. But there's no point in sharing hypotheticals, you know, I mean, if they make a deal with someone, and we can begin those conversations, believe me, a lot of folks will be involved again. You'll know.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now, all's we know is, they want to meet with us.
Yeah.
They have had some conversations with a developer that we know, who is a residential developer, so we're assuming they're going to do residential, but that's an assumption. I think, I think the Archdiocese will sell it to anybody that'll buy it.
Yeah, I was just going to say...
As long as they clean it up.
Yeah.
Well, the Southwood Committee does its best work in the summertime, also, so.
Exactly. Thanks a lot. Jim's on the caper, thanks, yeah. Thank you.
I bet you thought Jane and I would be the buyer.
That'd be fine, too. Just put up your dollar, and your cleanup money, you can have it.
We know who to contact, if you, be glad to share the phone number.
Be happy to meet with you, too.
Yeah.
All right, so we have annual appointments.
Yes, sir.
One thing that my trusty coworker pointed out to me is that we don't have on this, one thing that we don't have on this list is that zoning working committee, because that, those appointments go from December to December.
Okay.
And we actually didn't, we haven't reappointed them. So you may want to just reappoint that.
Yes.
My kind of gut feeling is all those people will appoint, and if not, they can just, they can just deny it.
Right, they don't have to accept, that's fine, we can do that. So while that lasts, after the Zoning Board of Appeals, then.
Okay.
Do you have all the names, Marion?
They're in your pack.
I have this, this...
No, no.
Is it on the website?
I could think, I, we can come up with it when it comes around, give me a chance, I'll write down stuff, I can...
I remember most, it's...
Do we need motions, it's motions for this, right, Jack?
Yes.
All right.
And you can do as many, you can lump as many together as you like.
Well, why don't we just go through them?
Right, right, what's that? Want to do them emotional, or you want to do them individually? I don't know if anyone...
For the folks at home, it's better to do them individually.
Okay, all right.
Just my opinion.
That's fine, no, let people know what's going on, yeah.
Want us to alternate across?
Yeah, sure.
I'll start it. Community Preservation Committee, nominate Cindy Andrade for Precinct 3, term to expire June 30th, 20. And Peter C. Diamond, Member-at-Large, to complete a term which will expire on June 18th, June 30th, 2018.
Second? Okay, any comments, questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, do you want to just go around?
Conservation Commission?
We need some people, so folks out there in the audience, we need, we have two vacancies. Okay, yeah, well, I didn't see you, that's my bad, too.
Corrections Advisory Committee, nominate Kevin Roach for term to expire June 30th, 2018.
Second?
Any questions, comments? All's in favor?
Aye. And this is a pass on Council on Aging as well.
We don't know yet?
None of them want it.
None of them want to return?
Okay.
For Cultural Council, I nominate Janice Conklin, term to expire June 30th, 2020.
All, just one at a time?
Pardon?
Oh, I didn't know, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot to turn the page.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And Kenneth Spritz, term due to expire 6/30/2020. And Richard Toldi?
Nope.
No, sorry.
He's done two terms already, so he's...
Second? Second. All's in favor?
Aye. This one's just you.
Okay, I guess I nominate and appoint Aaron Hunt for the Design Review Board, term to expire 6/30/2020. Am I in favor? That was easy, I like that one. Let's do more of those.
Jeff going now?
Energy Committee, nominate Andy Beckenowski, term to expire June 30th, 2020. And Emory Shigoff?
Schihofer?
Term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye. Historical Commission, I nominate Geraldine Tasker, term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
For Insurance Advisory Committee, I nominate Scott Bragdon, term to expire June 30th, 2020. Neil Cross, term to expire June 30th, 2020. And James Dyer, term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye. Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, I nominate Scott Cusino, term to expire June 30th, 19. And Mark Kenny, term to expire June 30th, 19.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You doing the next one?
Okay.
No, I was just, we're only doing the first one on the next one.
Right.
Okay.
On the Norfolk County Advisory Board, I nominate Patricia St. Armond, term to expire 6/30/18.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
That's the way you said it.
All right?
Perfect. For Records Access Officer, I nominate Anthony Turri, for term to expire June 30th, 2018.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye. For Swap, I nominate Robert Nicodemus, term to expire June 30th, 2018.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry.
For Town Council, I nominate, appoint Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lehane, term to expire June 30th, 2018.
Second?
Just a, not a question, Jack, everything good, you're obviously...
Perfect, yeah, yeah, very, very good.
You've worked with them, I know that.
They're the best we've had.
No, sir, okay, I agree.
Head and shoulders above, yeah.
Best we've had.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Nice.
Veterans Agent, Bill Conklin, term to expire June 30th, 18.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
For Zoning Board of Appeals, I nominate Christopher Weeder, term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye. Zoning Working Committee, Jane, help me, I'm missing one name, and I can't remember.
Aaron Hunt.
Aaron Hunt, thank you.
Okay, you got them.
Thank you. I think I got everybody. I nominate Peter Diamond, Member-at-Large, Jim Leehan from the Board of Selectmen, Jane Dewey, Member-at-Large, Walter Byron from the Planning Board, Tom Gilbert from the Board of Health, John Weddleton from CONCOM, and Aaron Hunt, Member-at-Large.
That's what I have, too. And then the only one we're missing is Ray, but he's...
New Town Planner.
We get, do we get them all? I think we got them all.
I will second that nomination, and I guess, for procedural purposes, I'll nominate Jim Leehan as...
Second that.
And for procedural purposes, I will abstain. I guess, yep, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'll abstain.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr....
Thank you, all the folks that were appointed, we thank you very much. Do they need to be sworn in again, Marion, or is it just, so please come to Town Clerk to get sworn in? I will be signing your appointment, too, but thank you very much, everyone, for volunteering. And as we, as you noticed, we need Conservation Commission, and Council on Aging, if anyone's interested. And I can see Betsy out there, she's thinking about it, she's like, I'm ready to pull the trigger, I want to pull the trigger, please do.
CONCOM is so much fun.
No, I'm thinking Council on Aging, or both, we need, we need people on Council on Aging and CONCOM.
Yeah, the meetings don't conflict, so you can do both.
Oh, thank you. We'll give you some time to think, Betsy, you can report back next meeting, if you're so interested. Okay, Jack, we got the annual appointments done. Public Safety Building Update.
And I have a couple of miscellaneous items as well.
You can miscellaneous all you want.
So, Public Safety Building Update, all contracts are signed, the builder has mobilized, the building permit has been issued. One, two minor, three minor issues are kind of kicking around. One, we've, we've almost resolved, is just a septic, we are working on trying to get the capacity from the other butters. We've also had some engineering done on a septic system. They've gone out and done the perk test, and just waiting for an estimate to come back on that.
To do our own septic, then, or not to?
Potentially, just as, we're using it as a negotiation, negotiating tool, and to, and to buying the septic from the butters.
Okay.
So at least we would know in the worst-case scenario, if we decided to build our own septic system, rather than buy the extra capacity.
Is it not, are they not as reasonable, like we are up on the hill, in terms of capacity cost?
It's, the negotiations have gotten closer and closer, so it's, it's...
I don't, you know, I don't know what's reasonable, what's not.
Started, started off with a big gap.
They were trying to hold us up, basically.
Because they knew we had to get there, too.
Highway robbery would be a better description of it.
And do they realize it's the police up there? They really want to hold us up, huh? Okay.
You'd be surprised.
Yeah.
We sought an alternative to get a fairer price.
Okay, that's a shame, I mean, because, you know...
The other issue I just want to talk about with you was, I just want to confirm that we are going to charge, we're not, we're not, obviously not charging a building permit fee for the police part of the thing, but we were going to charge a building permit fee for the MECC portion of the building. Wanted to make sure you guys thought, I mean, I kind of just treated it like a regional, the regional school, we charged for the, for King Philip, and it was a little bit of a fight about it.
There was a war over that.
Yeah, it's, this one's, that was a $300,000, I think, Bill, this one's about $20,000, so...
And we have to pay a portion of that anyways, we're on hook for...
Yeah, the MECC, the MECC would pay for it, out of their construction. So the architect, the, the bad part is, the architect didn't, of course, didn't put it into the specs, so they'd have to, you know, you're going to get the MECC Board of Directors, of which I am one of them, to approve that, paying that portion of the bill, you know. So it's, it's, we're talking about about 15, you know, if you take out our quarter, which would be about $4,000 to $5,000, we're talking about $15,000, do we want to charge that to the MECC? I assumed yes, but I'm...
My opinion is yes, I mean, it's a commercial enterprise, you know, even though it's quasi non-profit.
Seems like the towns should pay their fair share, but, you know, I'm not going to lose sleep over it either way.
I would say yes, and this is my thought.
I have mixed emotions on that. I, it's not, I wouldn't argue either way, I mean, whichever, but I can see not charging as well. I mean, it is, it's a public service facility that we're partnering with four towns.
Yeah, I also don't want to create bad will, I think is probably what you're...
Yeah, I just...
I mean, we can get them to...
We've worked hard for four years to bring this together, and we've had bumps, you know, and, and we've survived the bumps, and it just seems like, to me, almost the right thing to do, not to charge that fee for something that is a public safety facility that will, the town will, we're getting rent.
Yeah.
For the building. I won't argue, you know, if you guys want to charge it, it's okay. I just would ask you to think about it.
What if we, what if we waived the, I don't know, I want to cut you off. What if we waived the building permit, but charged the electrical permit, I mean, you know, kind of...
Well, we have to, yeah, all right, that one I could buy, because, yeah, because we have to pay for the consultant anyway, so that's a fee that we incur. Whereas, a building permit is really more revenue.
Yeah.
That, that would make more sense to me. That would be, that would be fair. Would you guys be okay with that?
Yeah. I just didn't know if the schools, like you said, if you charge the schools, just big, you know, keep it, you know, because that is, it's not public safety, but it's a quasi-public service, too, it educates our children, so...
I remember that.
Well, we didn't, oh, you know, if you charge them, I was around when we charged them, but I'm buying them.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the scale of that project is much bigger, too. So, you know, I mean, for, for Bob, or whoever the inspector was at the time, to spend, you know, literally months and months at the school inspecting, I, I wasn't involved in, I mean, I came in right at the end of that discussion, but...
There were only two selectmen at the time, one of the selectmen had to resign, and one, one was firmly entrenched in one view, and the other was firmly entrenched in the other view, and neither would budge. And it was...
I mean, it creates goodwill, like you said, I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, if this were $300,000, I would agree, because that is indicative of a lot of time and energy and effort. This, this is, to me, a little different, and, but I think that's a great compromise, Jack.
What was the other, oh...
And we have the groundbreaking on the...
Groundbreaking Tuesday, 10 o'clock.
27th, 10 o'clock. You guys all going to make it?
Yep.
We'll save you a shovel.
They're going to have shovels, so...
Nice, gold shovels, I hope.
Southwood, we already talked about. Metro Area Planning Council, that's a, that's, you know, that's the Economic Development Plan that Ray was working on, and Greg Damiano, I finally got that name down. So I've been meeting with Ray and with Josh, the consultant from NA PC. They are, we're working on the scheduling, the next session, sounds like it's going to be end of July. Trying to have a meeting with a lot of the business owners in town, so the first one was more with residents, next one, trying to meet with residents, again, do it at the library, have it at 7:30 in the morning.
Night or morning, sorry, you said?
Morning.
Oh, okay.
Now, Ray and Josh were both kind of thinking, you know, like, the business associations tend to do those types of things, you know, 7:30 meeting, have some breakfast, you know, bang, bang, and they're out, you know, 45 minutes to an hour. So I can send you some information about that, but that will likely happen end of July. Staffing update, we have our new Town Assessor, is, he began work this week, came back on, on Tuesday, so that was good.
Yeah, he's getting well yet, huh?
He's getting well yet, and...
Is he over under? Six months, a year?
Hopefully, six or seven years.
Thank you.
He seems to be doing well, you know, he's reporting, he reports to Todd as Finance Director. Todd said he's, John Corin is his name, he's doing great, off to a good start, seems to be willing to dive into all, you know, everything. Told him to have new growth by Friday, so I think he's, he's working on it.
You did tell him the number, too, didn't you?
Yeah.
This is the number you need.
Yeah.
And how about, how about the increase in assessed values, you gave him that number as well, didn't you?
Yep, yep.
Okay, good, then we're in good shape.
So hopefully, that'll, that'll work out well. And then, we are having two interviews this Thursday for the planning position, 3:00 and 4:00, is the time, so, hopefully get that position filled as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo, for representing us.
You said two, Jack? Did you get, how many, roughly, how many resumes did you get, you think?
I think he's got about 10 or so, but the, the only two that Scott, I don't think I think he's got, uh, about ten or so, but, um, the, the, the only two that Scott, uh, I don't think he passed them on, I don't think he passed the other ones on.
Cause he has the folder, I remember last time he did, he had the folder of other people too.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'll ask him to bring copies of all the other ones to the meeting on Thursday, just so in case, uh, somebody thinks that one of the ones that he weeded out is, is viable, but, uh.
Did you look at them too? I mean, besides, you know, the other.
I didn't, I looked at the two. Uh, he does a good job of.
No, I know, last time we did it, I mean, like you said, there was, people they put in front of us were all qualified, you know, different ways.
And then, so some of the other things I have is I sent a letter to Mr. Marini, um, about the, for lack of a better word, violation of the property stabilization by law. So, you know, that he hasn't, he has been working on, uh, the additional foundations, uh, for close to a year. The good news is that Bob met with, uh, his foreman, and he said they're gonna start the other foundations within a month, so. Hopefully this will become a non-issue, but, but he got my letter and, uh, was, uh, he said, Bob told him, he said, you gotta either start the foundations or, or bloom and seed that, that area where the two additional foundations will go. We had a, some, a lot of complaints from the people that go out in the back, you know, go through that area every day, is like, why, you know, why is this just sitting, sitting, uh, unstabilized? Um, I did send a letter to a resident in town this week, uh, issuing a permanent restraining order on their, on their, um, dog.
Oh, no.
Well.
It's okay.
It's not as bad as some of the other ones, so it's not, it's not a, not that we have a violent issue here, we, but we just, we have a.
Public nuisance.
We have a public nuisance issue, uh, somebody's walking their dog, uh, off-leash, um, through other people's property, and, uh, for lack of a better word, uh, not, not following the pooper-scooper laws, so, uh, just being a public nuisance, so.
Okay.
Hillary's been dealing with this person for.
Thank you. No, and it's, you know, I, Jack told me, I was like, oh my god.
For a couple of years. And, uh, you know, so hopefully this'll, so now we're gonna just require that they keep the person on the lea, the dog, the dog on, the dog and the person on, on a leash.
That was a tough letter, Jack.
And, uh, and have reminded that they need to stay on, uh, property, that they have the authority to, to go on. Okay. I'll do that one last. Public safety is done, Southwood done. Okay, we're down to the last one. I got transfers. So we need to do some transfers at, uh, and more than we usually do. But I got a list of them there for you, that, that, it's, it's a little intimidating looking. But it's not as bad as, uh, once I, once I give you the explanations. So that first section is all DPW, uh, transfers, and Bob, um, you know, lost some money through the budget, end of the budget process, uh, so he's looking to do some of the work, um, that he was gonna do in the FY eighteen budget. He's looking to transfer money from his salary, he's got some, uh, money in his salary accounts where, you know, they had open positions or didn't use overtime that they thought they were gonna use. And he wants to transfer them down to those line items, or you can see where, so he wants to do catch basin cleaning, pavement markings, daily maintenance of the highways, walkway replacement, and, and some shade tree, you know, put in some shade trees. So transferring that money and salaries down to those expenses. Second section is, is more the same, uh, it's kinda coincidental, the, the numbers.
It's just that it had to be the same.
Yeah, the numbers are the same.
I have to have Jim look at that, it seems like a two, uh, yeah.
Um, you know, he's, he's, he's got some, and he's got some, in this case, he's got some expense lines, line items where he's got some funds that, that, uh, will be unspent. And he's, he's hoping to just put some more money into the, into the roads. You know, and I, so I know, I don't know if you, you know, that one, you can, you can either have him do or not, but, uh, if we don't do this one, those, those numbers will go into free cash, but, uh, um, he was hoping to just be able, he's, he's eager to continue to do some more roads, so that was his thought process and.
I'm just curious how we come up with the same number in both columns?
Well, I.
Good accounting?
You know, we're trying to get, uh, well, the, the debits and the credits are, are easy to match up.
Well, they all have to, the debits and credits have to equal, it's just, it's.
Just the fifty-seven.
The fifty-seven, fifty.
Fifty-seven four times, yeah, that's, uh, I, I double-checked with Todd, but I think that's, uh, uh, just a coincidence.
You're, this is, these are, you, you gotta get these transfers in before June thirtieth.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna meet with the advisory board, we've had, asked the advisory board to meet, and they've, Dave's got a couple of dates, over the next week, where he's asked his group to get together, we're not sure what that date is yet. So, yeah, we need, we need your approval and we need their approval. The next one is, uh, Cole's got a service contract that, that was not funded in the budget, um, he got the, um, the ambulance folks to, to actually pay twenty-five hundred bucks to people that we bought the ambulance from, um, towards the contract. And then, uh, this'll, this'll pay off the remainder of the service contract, which will get us five years of, uh, maintenance on the, the power, so this is the power lifter, the thing that lifts the, um, stretcher up into the, yeah.
Saves the guy's backs.
Up into the, into the ambulance. Police salaries. As you know, we've got a, uh, after lots of negotiations, we've got a police officer who is gonna retire. And this is to pay off his, uh, vacation and sick balances that, that we contractually owe him. And then the second, so that's the thirty thousand dollars, and then the twenty thousand dollars, um, is money that Chuck has in his salary account that he wants to move down to pay off some maintenance contracts. And again, it's, it's, um, you know, he lost some money in the, in the FY eighteen budget, so he's, you know, he's, he's trying to pay some maintenance contract, well, they're, they're two thousand and seventeen maintenance contracts, so you can pay them either in June or July. And then, uh, but again, he's trying to, trying to do that out of this year's budget, so he can free up some.
But that is a seventeen contract.
Yep, yep. Um, and then the two bottom ones are just, uh, the recreation department and the, the, um, they just had the two hundred and fifty dollar, paying for Kathy O'Brien's salary, or her hours fluctuate a little bit, and, uh, she's actually got, had some extra hours in June, just signing up people for all the rec programs, so. Anne was hoping to get two hundred and fifty dollars to cover some of the extra time that she's been putting in. And then the town clerk, um, Carol was out for, uh, a couple of times in the spring, and, uh, we should've done this transfer at the Maytown meeting, but we forgot. We had to pay Anthony, um, Anthony only works, I think he's twenty, twenty-five hours a week. So we asked him to cover for Carol, um, a few weeks while she was, you know, just for the full day, while, uh, while she was out. So that was just to make up that time that Anthony covered for Carol. So that's it, I hope, uh.
A couple of questions. Have we used any of the advisory board, uh, we, we upped it to fifty grand, is, have we used anything?
We have not, although we did transfer, uh, money out at the Maytown meeting, so there's, there's ten thousand sitting in that account now.
Okay, and that's, that's the, that's the seventeen number.
Yeah, yep.
So we're gonna use, I love the way these numbers work out, we're gonna use twenty-seven, twenty-seven from the advisory board. Two fifty and twenty-four seventy-seven fifty.
If it does, yeah, I'll trust.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven fifty.
Yeah, Todd's got a gift for numbers.
He's really creative. And just to be sure, the, the numbers in Bob's budget, all, he's, I mean, I understand what he's doing, but, so he's putting fifty-seven thousand really more towards the roads.
Yep.
Which is good news. And then the other fifty-seven thousand to basically roads and, and.
Pavements, everything.
Yeah, miscellaneous issues, catch basins, things of that nature, okay. And I know, I know about the police thing, so.
Question, sir? Motion?
Uh, I move to approve.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
He's running pretty nicely.
The guy that likes numbers, I tell you, I just.
Was that it for you, Jack?
That's it for me.
Uh, I just have one thing, just informational, um, the, you know, we hired a consultant for the housing production plan.
Saw a copy of pre.
It is, it's actually ahead of schedule.
Yeah, looks good.
We've seen the first draft, uh.
Right, you got a copy, right?
This, this is the advantage of, of hiring a professional that does this for a living, that can get it done, get it done in a timely manner, and get it in and get it approved and certified.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're meeting with them, uh, next week, twenty-seventh, uh, after the groundbreaking at twelve noon to go over the first preliminary draft. And then there are two meetings, one in July and one in September, and the dates elude me at the moment, but we'll get, I, can you be sure they get on the webpage, Jack?
Sure.
Which are community dates. I say community dates, they're dates that we're gonna, anyone that would like to come in, and we'll, we'll show where we are with it and the comments and whatever folks have. We, we're looking for that community input, so. So far, so good, and something unusual, we're ahead of schedule.
Nice.
Hopefully, uh, our, our plan is to have that into the state and fully certified before October. That's the plan, so.
Jack, did you, on the emails I saw going around regarding the Grange and the sign, cause I saw Betsy.
Historical Commission is gonna meet in July.
That's right.
Yeah, first week in July.
Okay. Does we have some say in that too, or we're, we're supposed to opine on that, I mean, in terms of.
Yeah, they're supposed to get permission, uh.
Jointly, right?
CPC, historical, and board of selectmen, I believe. I think all three were in the covenant, if I remember.
Okay. I forgot that they were gonna be talked about the first day, I didn't, okay. So we'll have to address that then, probably somewhere.
This is. The sign was in the sign.
Sign was correct.
Sign, it seems like, yeah.
Yep.
And I did check with the building department, just, and just so you know, they, they approved the part of the sign that says the Grange, they did not approve, they didn't, they didn't opine on the part that, uh.
Oh, so that, they didn't, they were not aware of that?
I mean, might've been after.
I'm not sure if they're aware, Bob said he, he only, he said, I only, I am approving this part of the sign, I'm not sure. When he said that to me, now that I think about it, I'm not sure if he meant he didn't see that part, or, or they didn't even give it to him, but, but, whatever it was, when he signed off, he said, I'm only approving this, this upper part, you know, this portion of the sign, which is the part that says the Grange. I, I only, I'm.
It's, I mean, I, I, to me, this really resides more with CPC and the historical commission, because, you know, they're, they're the ones that gave them the money, and they're the ones that have the covenant.
I just already mentioned that, so, yeah, I, like you said, I agree, I mean, they can do it.
Question for you, for you guys, um, Old Town Hall. One of my favorite toppings. Would it be, um, before we, knowing we gotta do something, uh, you know, we've been saying this for years, but, but we gotta do this. And now knowing what we know, in, in terms of what we can and cannot build on that site, and, uh, the need for grandfathering, et cetera, would it be worth one more visit to CPC to see if they have any interest in working with us on this?
Well, is CPC gonna participate in the building meeting that we had discussed having, whether they're gonna be?
Well, to, several towns, Needham and.
Holliston.
Holliston.
Holliston have both used CPC funds to restore their Old Town Hall. That does qualify as a building over seventy-five years old. So it is, it is, qualifies under our historical consideration. And knowing that we are restricted to the footprint, basically, of the existing building, kinda changes what we thought we might be able to do on that site. So we either have to do something with the existing site or sell it. Those are really our only two viable options. And so.
Are you volunteering to go this time, or you're gonna, you're not gonna throw me to the wolves at this time, right? At least see Betsy in the audience here anyways, and you got your what, you know, you got your chef, you know, I had no luck the first time I went, but I didn't do a good job, but.
Uh, you did fine. Uh, I'm just asking, it's, it's been a while, I mean, would it be worth going back and asking them one more time? I, I mean, we have different factors involved in this now than we did last time we went. We, we, we didn't know that we had this restriction, we didn't know we had this issue with that particular piece of property. You know, we, we thought we had a broader use, potentially, of that piece of property, so it wasn't the same set of circumstances that you were forced to go deliver.
It was painful.
So in terms of the CPC funds being used, the fact that, um, I, you know, we're talking about trying to salvage the building that's there, as opposed to raise it and reconstruct, or?
Well, it's an historical site, and we, we don't know, I mean, if nothing else, if they could fund, uh, enough money to evaluate whether or not it's salvageable. I mean, that's, I guess, would be, to me, the first step, because we, we don't even know that.
I mean, I, yeah, and I'm not sure how far you can or you want to push the envelope, I mean, like the, the old schoolhouse, you know, they, they basically stripped that down to nothing, and then rebuilt it.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm sure you could do something like that, um, that may be an expen, that's, that approach has gotten expensive, approach, but, but if you're gonna try to retain historical integrity, um, you know, that, that might be the, you know, keep, keep as much, you know, or little as you can up. I mean, my thought, in a, um, well, I think what Jim is saying is, you know, my thought is, you know, I just wanna make sure we, the one thing that I could see using that building for, um, is, you know, A, some small offices for, like, the historical commission, the CPC, they, they could use, you know, some better space than they have today. And then some type of a, a meet, you know, we can always have more community meeting rooms, I mean, it's hard to get the, as you guys know, it's hard to get the library. You know, and if we can, if we can create, you know, open up some space there and make some, some flexible space for another meeting purpose, it certainly is gonna help us in, you know, maybe not today, but in the, in the, in the long run.
And all we have is the library and the schools, that's really all we have. I mean, we have this room, we have the one downstairs, but the one downstairs is, is a small room. Twenty, we have fifteen people, it has about its capacity. I just think it would be worth a try to, to go back, and I would go with the, if you guys agree, I, I would suggest we look at it from the perspective of, can you, would you be willing to at least fund an evaluation as to, and I don't know what that number is, maybe we get some guidance from Bob as to what that might be, but, what, what can, what can we or can we not do with that facility? And we, we know physically we can do in terms of the footprint, what we don't know is, is, you know, can it be restored, is it beyond being restored? You know, we don't know that. And we need to, it's gonna cost us some money to find that out. And then CPC is in a better position to make judgment as to whether or not they wanna go to the second step. As we would be, as to whether we wanna go to the second step, I mean, if it's just not salvageable. You know, if someone's, whoever looks at it says, you know, structurally, you can't restore this, you gotta tear it right down to the foundation, and, uh, as Jack said, that now becomes an expensive option. Still viable, but becomes far more expensive, so.
So just in terms of sequence of events here, we've talked about having a meeting, getting people together.
Yeah.
Different, uh, groups within town, schools, recreation, what have you, getting people together, having a, you know, that type of, um, brainstorm session as far as what might be possible pending, like you say, engineering, um, constraints, other issues with that site.
Well, one, one other thought I had, and it just kinda popped in this week, based on some recent events up at King Philip. It's not unusual to have school administration housed separate from the schools, that's common. And with all that's going on at King Philip and all of the recent discussions, um, I know this has been talked about in the past, but maybe there's a window of opportunity coming in here for us to take a fresh look, not, not, I'm not talking regionalization, let me make that clear. But there may be some ways to combine administration. We've looked at it many times.
So put school administration for both the elementary school and King Philip in that one building, in, or in a building, someplace?
There's, there's gonna be space issues.
At both places.
Both places. And so, um, you know, that, it, it may be an alternative, I don't know, but it just, I was thinking through different possible uses of this, and knowing that with all the development that's gone on in Renton and Plainville, those large complexes, those large fortyBs. And the growth that we're experiencing here, and, and I know we've only got about a thousand students, and I know back in the early nineties, we had twelve hundred students, so, you know, we're, but still, you know, we like small classes here in Norfolk, so, you know, the alternative is those class sizes are gonna go up if we don't look at more use, and what we have thought as not being to our advantage and having two facilities now actually may be to our advantage in having two facilities, because the growth is in the lower, you know, ages, it's kindergarten, first grade, those are the ones that are seeing the significant increase in student population, so. I know Ingrid has the ability to move the second grade up to the Freeman Kennedy if she needed to, so she has flexibility on how she aligns the grades by using two buildings, based on the, where the kids fit. So that actually works to our advantage at this point in time. It's just a thought, that, you know, if, maybe that is an opportunity to look at it from an administrative perspective.
I mean, it seems like it starts with, we have to evaluate the building, before you even, maybe have this community meeting, cause the building's not really salvageable. Would the people wanna know that, you know, that, the schools, the recreation, the council, and, you know.
I just wanna explore every possible use of that, cause that's the last land we got, that we own, before we say goodbye to it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and one, Ingrid, you know, six months or so ago, one of the thought was, um, again, this is without exploring the building itself at all, but was, you know, maybe they move pre-K over to a building like the, uh, Old Town Hall, so, that's a.
Not having had any conversation with anyone about it, that's the thought that had come to my mind, which is kinda the, the tact that I was taking, I think, at our last meeting, as to why to get this group together to have little conversations, but, you know.
But don't you think it needs, we, for it to, you know, the, I wanna say, the state of the building, like, what is it, you know, what is it, you know, what can you actually, you know, this is bigger, you know, it becomes pretty daunting, like you said, if it's a total teardown and rebuild, not that it's not possible, and.
Right, well, rec, I mean, as you know, rec used that facility right up until, what, maybe four or five years ago?
Like when I was on the rec board, I think she still has something.
I know stuff's still there.
Only the one room on the, on the far side, which I think is newer than the older building. But still, you know, I mean, you, you can't have a building in the condition that it's in being used. But it's, it's just, I'm just throwing it out, I'm, I'm looking for, it's, he's a strong man, just trying to think of some way we might be able to use this.
I remember the Foxborough town administrator today. I bought him lunch, cause he beat me out on that job three years ago, finally, but, uh.
You were very fortunate that he did that.
He, uh, uh, he said they've got, they've got tons of room in their schools, um, cause their school populations, they've been going down, and they're, they are above, they're at like twelve percent for affordable housing, so, I'm not sure where it all is, but, um, so they've got, I said, well, we'd be happy to ship over some.
Some affordable housing, since, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a, uh, I'll send you, send Jack, and he can send on to you the webpage, but I was, there's a webpage, uh, with the state that lists all of the affordable projects in the state, and gives some data as to the number of students that came out of that, and it was surprisingly low.
He did, one of the things he said was.
Surprisingly low.
They have a bunch of apartments in, uh, at some place?
Maybe that, over by the old hospital, maybe, Jack, they've been, Ed, whatever they call it, right, they've been converting that.
Back at the Stop and Shop?
Yeah, over that area, the Mechanics Street, that area, Chestnut Street.
He said, they have very few kids, you know.
That's what this data shows.
Few of them are three bedrooms, but not even three bedrooms very much, and hardly any kids in the one and two bedrooms, you know, obviously the one bedrooms, you don't get any, but, uh, he said, very few, but.
Yeah, I was surprised when I saw that, that I, I, it was, it's lower than the, than the factor we were using from Shrewsbury. When we were looking at him, it was, it was significantly lower than that factor. Not that it. lower than that factor. Not that it would be valid for us or not valid for us, I don't know. But it was lower than I thought.
So, you're willing, are you willing to go then, talk to CPC? Do you wanna do that? Are you okay with that? Or is that?
Uh, yeah. Okay.
No, you don't have, yeah. I mean, Jeff seems like he can volunteer, too. I just, I don't want-
This was our liaison to CPC.
That's me, and he's the liaison. Liaisoned. I didn't do very well. Maybe it's, you know, you know, maybe a different approach. You seem to have more connections on that board than I do. So, you know.
Well, one of the voters would have to accuse herself of voting, for sure, so.
Exactly. You're starting on, you know, you're doing better, you have, you have better luck than I would.
I'd be, I'll be glad to.
I think we go to them and ask them, you know, what would they like to see that building?
Just share with them where we are. We, we didn't know all this the last time we went, so you're being hard on yourself. We, we didn't have that data.
You dropped the ball on the other thing, too, that night, though, didn't you?
Yeah, probably. I thought for two things, well, then, I, yeah. So, thanks, Jack. Thanks for that reminder. Let me look at my notes on, let me look at my notes on Jack and his contract. I'm trying to-
Uh, contract's twenty-twenty, I checked.
I'm sure we can shorten that in some, some way. You know, Jane's retired, she might wanna be added.
There is a, there is a for cause section in that contract.
We know what that, we know what the cause could be.
I got a good law.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Uh, nothing I can think of.
Folks joining us? Questions, comments?
They have, well, just for your information, and last night at the school committee meeting at King Philip, they did make a decision on a prospective new business manager.
They did.
Sadly, sadly, and-
I, it was, it was one of, it was one of the finalists that we brought forward, which is good news. And they've, I, I, it was, I think it was done at a public session. I don't wanna say his name if it wa, yeah, it has, he was a finalist, has to be public. It's a gentleman from Dennis Yarmouth School District, who is currently in that position.
Hmm, very good.
So.
Best of luck to him, hopefully he works out.
Live closer than Dennis Yarmouth, I hope?
As I say, yeah.
Pardon?
Does he live closer than Dennis Yarmouth, or?
Well, he had to live in one or the other, Dennis or Yarmouth. They're two different.
No, I don't think that's his concern.
Uh, his resident address was Yarmouth. So, I don't know what that'll all mean. I mean, that's about an hour and fifteen minute commute.
On good days, yeah.
I mean, had good luck with long-distance employees, that's all.
And it doesn't, it doesn't work well in August and July, July and August. That's a tough commute. But anyway, they're, they've entered into, they can, entered into contract negotiations.
Good. I know you were excited about the three finalists.
He certainly is qualified. So, that was good news.
Good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
You don't wanna stay for the hour?
I, I will, if you don't want a second, we can, we can continue as long as you want.
We had people stay for the whole meeting, that's awesome.
That's, that's our best time. We really appreciate it. Okay.
Whatever happened.
You know, alls in favor?
There was a shoot this past weekend, and-
I was curious if anybody heard anything.
Uh, we had, we had a complaint, but the, they were complaining that they're shooting. So, you know, they went down and checked it out, and everything was being done fine.
How's the crowd? I don't know how many people they get to.
Uh, I didn't ask. I, Mike, I did talk to Mike, he said he had twenty-nine contestants, and they, they started late, I think, because of the weather, but I'm not sure, I don't know, but whatever. He started at eleven, and they were done by, they were done by two, all wrapped up by two-thirty, so.
Seems like not very much of an event. I mean, yeah, you know, I know, can go overtime twice in a while.
He said they had great, the one comment that he made was they had great balloon setters. They had some, some four-H kids who were, were busting it, he said, and they were, you know, they were moving real fast. So, by the time that the next horse-
Yeah, it was ready to go, instead of waiting for them to load.
The balloons were already up, so there was, there was no dead time waiting for the balloons.
I appreciate him doing that, then, hopefully.
We haven't voted yet, right?
Yeah.
Fall town meeting?
We, we got a motion to adjourn on the table.
Yeah, but it wasn't voted yet.
November sixteenth, I think, is we, we-
Right. Is the only thing we really have at this particular point in time would be capital?
That's all I have, yep.
Do we wanna hold a town meeting just for that?
Everything's happening. It's expensive, I, I'm not gonna have any zoning bylaw?
Not a lot of planner, probably. I don't, I don't know of any in the, in the pipeline.
Well, I mean, the, I know the, the folks that brought forward the noise article are just, you know, wanna bring it back. And I did share some information with them yesterday, and I sent it to Jack, and I think you guys may have seen it. Just explaining the process, you know, 'cause if, if it's gonna be a petition again, it has to be a new petition, can't be an old one. And it requires a hundred signatures for the fall meeting, special town meeting, and only ten signatures for the fall, the spring meeting. So.
Well, it's a good point. I mean, there's a cost to having a meeting.
There is a cost. And if, if we're, you know, if, we've, we've had years where we did not hold a, a special meeting. And I just, if we don't have a lot on the agenda, I would suggest we, unless there's urgency in the Capitol side of the house, that we-
None that I'm aware of. I mean, you know, there's, there's vehicles, but, but we bought the vehicles in the spring that, that were critical for the winter season, so.
We don't have to make that, I, I just-
I'm, I'm certainly leaning towards, you know, from my point of view, not having a meeting. I mean.
It's just, this expense, it's just time on everyone's part, too, here.
And it's never well-attended.
Yeah.
I mean, unless there's something really bubbling up, but if it's just those items, I'd rather see it wait till the spring, but let's, let's see what else comes in in the next month or two. It ends in August, right? End of August?
What?
Submissions.
Yeah, usually the warrant closes end of August, early, very early September.
I know the clerk, I know the clerk wants to bring one forward, but she's willing to wait until the spring.
She'll, I'm sure she will.
I think it's right after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Right after Labor Day.
Is when the warrant will close.
The warrant will close right after Labor Day.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's, with that zoning article for the noise, they'd have to have that in its final form by the end of, by, by Labor Day. And if they're gonna meet with the zoning working committee, and then meet with the planning board and the Board of Selectmen.
Right, but if it comes in as a petition-
Doesn't matter, right.
We can't change that petition.
Correct.
So, you know, it's, the, the meeting is, those meetings should be held, and we'll certainly arrange them, but there's no give and take. You know, it's, it's yea or nay, because-
Yeah. And the other thing with that is, I just think that's a, that's one that's gonna have a lot of interest, and I think it's better to have those at the spring town meeting when you have a lot of-
I mean, it affects everyone in town. I mean, granted, it's-
Right.
Well, I got a very nice note back from the, one of the authors of that, and then they're communicating with the body of people that participated in that process to see what they wanna do. 'Cause I did share with them the process, just the process.
Excuse me, she must have some enforcement, she has some enforcement?
I'll, I'll stop that, I promise.
No, no, you don't have to stop. We, we, yeah. So, we have, we have a motion and a second on the journey. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll be back, when we'll be back, Jack?